Okay, as you can see, it's six thirty-two P M. It's Monday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Six thirty-two P M., as you can see from the time right there, and I'm waiting to be let into the meeting. School committee meeting. Okay, six thirty-three P M. They haven't opened it yet. Okay, the time is now six thirty-six P M. and still waiting. Okay, six thirty-seven P M. just got let in.
So they called me to order at six thirty-seven. For those of you that can't figure this out, we're doing things a little bit differently today. In anticipation of everybody coming back to school, we're gonna start our school committee meetings live again. This month, we're gonna do a hybrid version where you guys are allowed to be at home. Next month, we'll probably not have this Zoom part. And we will just do like we did in the past, back to the new one. So that being said, we will start. Westbrook Elementary School, six graders are up. I see this is Mulberg and Mrs. Duff. If you guys want to introduce your students and tell us what they're here to do.
Sure, so I wanna introduce Brielle Gerolitis. She should give a little way Brielle. And then Jacob Tambolio. And they're gonna give you a little update on how things are going in sixth grade at Westbrook Field Elementary. And I am going to click the present button here, and I'm gonna click share screen. I'm gonna go to this one. All right, now I'm gonna ask the question everybody asked, can you see my screen? You can say it, excellent, all right. So, sorry to stretch that out, let me click here. All right, so go ahead, Jacob, please start us off.
So, we do a lot of projects in fifth grade, and they're really fun because you can tell like the time and effort that Miss Duff and Miss Mulberg have put into it. And they end up coming out really cool. And a lot of the things that we like to do in person is to see our friends and to see our teachers because we can learn more and we can interact with our friends better. And then the games we play in math are actually extremely cool because Miss Mulberg puts a lot of time and effort into them. And they're actually really fun, and we get to like win prizes at the end. Gym class is really cool, even with Mr. Foley, and now we have Miss Sweet. And they did like really fun things with us, and we get to do volleyball now. And then having our pets on Zoom is really fun because I have my dog with me sometimes when we're on Zoom. And she just sits there next to me and stares at me. And then it helps us more, a lot of people help have them more with them. And then like there's a picture of one of our classmates with their cats. And it's really nice to have our pets with us.
All right, Brielle.
This was a project we did at the end of our unit about Mesopotamia, and which is also known as the Fertile Crescent. And it is also, it's known as the Fertile Crescent because it is the land between two rivers. The two rivers are the Tigris and the Euphrates. And there were, trade was really important because they got most of their food and everything, and they, yeah, that slide. And there were different social classes, upper, middle, and lower, and based on their importance. And the king was at the top, and scribes were really important because most kings could not read or write, and the scribes did that for them. And then their achievements, the farming, to me, I think was the most important because they fed the civilization. And they irrigated, which was how they watered their crops and everything. And that's how they fed the whole entire civilization.
So some of our math games that we did was trash football. And it was on dividing fractions. It's where you just had a piece of paper and you threw it into a basketball. And then I like the football one because you'd pick one and then you'd do it. And if you get the answer, it gets correct. And some of the, and the prizes that we win actually are really cool because they're masks that Miss Mulberg makes us, and they're actually really nice.
I let them pick out their own fabric and make them a mask. Only in two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one would you give a mask for a prize. Right, Brielle?
For this month, we did Black History Month, because it is. And we did a quilt, and each of us did a different piece of it. And all the pieces fit together and made a quilt, and we displayed it in front of the school. And I did Dorothy Van Vaughn. And she was NASA's first woman manager, and she was really cool to learn about.
And they colored them all, they were all monochromatic. So they had one color shade, and then we pieced it all together. The kids were, I think they really enjoyed it.
I think so too. And it came out beautiful, it's on a display case in the front of the building, it really looks great.
Excellent, and? Mrs. Duff?
Oh, and if you have any questions, I'm sorry if I forgot that I was up. If you have any questions, you can feel free to ask either one of our sixth graders. One thing also that I just wanted to add that with the live streaming that we've really enjoyed doing is, well, for instance, the ziggurat that we made, the students that were at home and the students that were in school, we were doing the same exact thing every day. So they just had to carry their materials back and forth, whether or not they were remote learning or in-person learning, and we just all, we did it all together. So in that respect, I thought that it was, it was pretty good. We usually do it in centers, last year I did it in centers, and this year we had to improvise a bit, so we switched it around. But if anybody has any questions for our sixth graders, I know they'd be happy to answer.
All right, does anybody have any questions? I have a question, but Mrs. Duff just stole it.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Anybody have any questions for these guys?
They're thorough.
Guys are getting off easy. All right, so you're the one that I was, I went into the elementary school on Friday and was talking to Mrs. Duff and Mrs. Mulberg. And Jacob, were you the one that was talking today?
Ah, yes, I was.
All right, so the question is, how old's your brother today?
Um, he's actually ten years old.
Ten years old, so this is how dedicated Jacob is to school. He's had a Zoom call with us, and having cake and dinner with his family, celebrating his brother's birthday.
I think he did type to me in the chat today, right around breakfast time, were you having a piece of cake then?
Ah, yeah, I was actually eating cake on.
We had his cake this morning too.
All right, so who won those games of trash football?
Um, I would say B one. When we ever, when we play A one in school, B one usually wins. I don't know how, but it's some, it'll go like three weeks, B one will win, and then three weeks, A one will win.
But we do the roomies versus the zoomies. And so the kids that are in the room, they're the roomies that week, the kids that are at home are the zoomies.
So what's the, let me ask you Brielle, what's the best thing about being hybrid?
Um, I think, cause you kinda get the both, you get both experiences because you get to go in school and you get to be at home, and like Jacob said, you get to be with your pets. And I feel like I like being in person better, but you basically get the best of both worlds by being hybrid.
So what about you, Jacob?
Well, like Brielle said, it's fun with being with your pets, but going to school will be fun. Even though going from one-thirty to three o'clock, it'll just be a big difference, which I don't really care about that, it'll make the day longer and we get to learn more than when we would learn at school. And we don't have to worry about logging onto Zooms and stuff because we're there at school with our teachers. And I'd have to say, Miss Duff and Miss Mulberg are the best teachers I've had this year so far in my years of being at Westbrook Elementary. And I actually like being in class with them, cause it's really fun.
You're so sweet.
I think he's gonna get A's, I don't know.
Well, we'll put it in your mailbox tomorrow, your tip.
Extra mask there, Jacob, you know? Any else have any questions to ask?
All right, well, we appreciate you guys talking. So I don't have a question, but I have a comment. And my comment is just that your presentation tonight was absolutely phenomenal. The way that you two are comfortable in front of a large audience, the way that you didn't miss a beat, the way that you presented, your confidence level and your positivity are just outstanding. Great, great job. And as I mentioned earlier, I have something special for you next time that I go to Westbrook Field Elementary School. So I wanna congratulate the two of you on doing a phenomenal job. And what happened last month, we always showcase a student at the school committee meeting to start. Last month, we had one of our seniors who was actually getting interviewed by Harvard University. And I see you, the two of you, doing wonderful things like that student last month. So keep up the good work, you're on the right track, you're doing all the good things, and we are super, super proud of you. And if you need anything whatsoever, please let me know and we'll take care of you. And Mrs. Duff and I were talking, we're so excited to have you up here next year. We just can't wait because you two are gonna do absolutely wonderful things. So I will stop by and I have something for you, and I will see you soon. And I also wanted to thank Mrs. Mulberg and Mrs. Duff. I think our students said it better than I can say it, but from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all that you're doing. You're changing, you're molding lives, you're making a positive difference. And we appreciate it, especially in this very, very difficult environment. So thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you two just sit down for another minute or two if you wanna hear? So the next presentation is Darian Shepherd, and she's our advisory council representative. Usually what she does every month is she gives us an update of what goes on at the high school. So I know you guys aren't here yet, but if you wanna hear what's going on at the high school now, you can stick around, otherwise you guys are free to go, free to play with your pets and finish your homework. All right, Darian, you are up. Superintendent Castigian's getting your presentation ready.
All right, the sixth graders might be better presenters than me, so.
Tell me when you want me to change the slide.
Okay, you can go. Mr. Kukas just put a cute little spring photo to open it. But first, we have the community cleanup day. So on Saturday, March sixth, a bunch of students, staff, and community members all came together and volunteered their time to give back to the community. They met at the Warren Town Common and broke off into different groups and headed out in different places and collected trash all around the town. It was extremely cold, I guess, but that didn't stop them from coming out. And a huge shout-out goes to Mr. Salvador, Mr. Kukas, and school committee member Sarah Chaturaut for helping set up and run this day, it sounded like it was very successful. Miss Cutter's digital photography class just recently made a new preschool sign, which will be placed out of the entrance of the new preschool, as you know, that just got finished. Alexa Garanda in tenth grade won the design contest and is pictured above, or below with her design. And this was a month-long project with feedback being given back to the students from the preschool staff. And I actually was in the digital photography class last year, or two years ago, and did something for the sign that is on the road going to Quabog. So this whole process, I can tell you guys, is very fun. And in addition to the sign, Miss Cutter's class designed the Quabog Thank You Card, the state championship sign, which was the class that I was part of, Q R codes for the Lucy Stone Park and the banners that hang from the light bulbs coming in and out of high school. And the guidance, they set up virtual college fairs. So they've worked hard this year to get us like as involved with college stuff as they can, and they've been doing a really good job at it. So basically colleges have virtual tours and stuff and fairs through online. And if you just check the Quabog grad site, the guidance section has these opportunities listed as well as all the scholarships offered, and you can just print them out from there, fill them out on there, and then turn them into the office when you're ready. And the Innovation Center, so Josh Gray completed his Eagle Scout project recently in the Innovation Center. He presented it last month at the school committee meeting, and he just finalized it in this last week. And he will forever leave his mark on Quabog with this project. The art gallery, so Quabog has their own virtual gallery showcasing art made in Miss Hanson and Miss Giger's classrooms. And you can view them using any of these links below. These are just some upcoming events, so football just recently started. They have full practices outside, and many students are participating. First scrimmage was last Friday, and they won thirty oh over Quabon. They will host Oxford this Saturday at eleven at home. And if you just check the website for the link, the livestream, the game, you can. And two members of each sibling are allowed at the game. Obviously due to COVID restrictions, you can't have everybody and a bunch of fans, but two people, they get tickets and they can come. Winter track just began today, actually, and they were outside, which is good. Chorus, they have some new regulations, but they were happy to announce that the chorus rehearsals start on March sixteenth and eighteenth after school. The Student Council is in the process of planning a spirit week for April vacation because last one, we tried for Christmas break, and we had different cohorts have different days and like different dress-up days and stuff, so everybody could be involved, no matter what days you were going to school. But they've worked closely with the nurse to follow the guidelines and everything, so they are getting that all taken care of. The students in the student innovation class, they continue to create informational videos for students at the elementary schools with the intent to share them and provide valuable insight from the programs at Quabog. And we are happy to announce two new clubs, the Fishing Club with Mr. Salvador and the Civic Engagement Club with Miss Galen Amy. And this is senior updates for us, so we start our Krispy Kreme fundraiser next week. So if anybody likes to buy donuts, you can come to me or any of the seniors and put in an order, and those will be back to you, I wanna say, in like a month that they pick them up and we deliver them like the day we get them, so they're nice and fresh. But other than that, we're talking about having a senior prom and senior class trips and other potential things depending on how everything goes with COVID. We've been having a lot of school meetings, like the council has been having a lot of school meetings, like the leaders. I'm a student advisor, so I'm a part of those meetings, and they're going pretty well trying to plan things. And also, we have had a lot of meetings with teachers, like Mr. Duff just had meetings one-on-one with us to discuss what we are doing for college, our careers in the future, if anybody were going to the military or anything like that, so he can see and make sure that everybody's all set. Senior photos and quotes were also submitted for the yearbook, and we have a couple things to plan for the last month at Quabog. And then these are just some celebrations, so these were the college early acceptance dates. So these are all the colleges that some of the seniors got into for early acceptance. They range from a lot of different places, but you can just take a look at that for some insight to that. That is about it.
Great job.
If anybody has any questions, but.
All right, anybody have any questions? Hey, I got a question about the art gallery. Is that updated as the year goes on? Cause I know I clicked on it, you know, a couple months ago and looked at it, but if I go back now, will I see different art? Or will I see the same art that was there a few months ago?
I think you will, Mr. Duff and Mr. Kukas will probably know the answer better than I do, but I would imagine that it does get updated.
That does get updated.
It does, okay.
Pretty much on a weekly basis.
I highly recommend just clicking on it because it's pretty cool, just the technology and how it's set up. And some of the artwork that we have from some of the kids in this district is pretty lights out, you know? It's pretty impressive, so. Good job, um, you taking any A P M A P exams?
I already did, I just took my A P lit exam like last Wednesday.
How did you think it went?
Um, I got my multiple choice back, not the greatest, but not the worst, it's like average, so.
There you go.
Yeah, we'll see how the actual one goes, but.
That's it, all right, well, perfect, well, thank you very much, and we'll see you next month.
Yep, thank you, and also good job to the sixth graders, you guys did really good presenting.
That's it, let me take it over for you in a few years. That's right.
Exactly.
All right, thanks, Darian. All right, superintendent's report.
So the first item on my report is constant communication with the Board of Health, status update for all schools and our reopening plan. First thing, and most of you know this already, but the Board of Health was instrumental in getting our teachers signed up for vaccines starting on Saturday, Saturday, March twentieth. So we're very, very excited to have our teachers starting to get vaccinated, and that is a very good thing for all of us. Earlier today, I met with all of the principals of our schools, and we started, or we're in the process of going through our reopening plans. We're working on a communication plan to send out to the school community. As I mentioned in my update last week to the school community, we will meet all of the DESI standards. Our schools K through six will be open full-time come April fifth, and there is much more information to come. We're working out our lunch plans as we speak. And tomorrow night, we're actually meeting with the Quabog Education Association to make sure that they're on board with our plans as well. So after we meet with the Q E A tomorrow night, I would expect that later on this week, early next week, we will communicate those plans to parents. But I think for the school community to know that come April fifth, our elementary schools will be open as they are in a normal year, normal hours. At the middle high school, we're working on a plan for seventh and eighth grade to bring them back ahead of the state guidelines. More information will be coming on that. And then once we get our seventh and eighth grade on board, we will discuss plans for nine through twelve. So that's pretty much the update on the reopening. We did receive a twenty thousand dollar grant from Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This grant is to further the study with North Brookfield. This past Friday, we released an R F P that went out to seven different vendors. To date, I believe we've heard from four of them that they are looking at a proposal, and they will bring that proposal back to, or submit that proposal to the administration. What I would suggest is they are due, the proposals are due April second. So Chairman Schlenker may be in the building in budget subcommittee meetings, which our next one is April twelfth. We can review those proposals and then make a recommendation to the full school committee to move forward with selecting the correct vendor for, or whatever is most appropriate for that grant. So we're basically in a holding pattern for now. As I get more information, I'll keep the school committee aware. And as I get the proposals, what I'll do is I will share them with the building and budget subcommittee. The next item is the AHERA asbestos report. Those reports, those are complete, they're posted on our website. It is just something that we have to do every three years that's required. So that has been checked off. And the next Southern Wester County Education Collaborative meeting is this Friday, eight-thirty via Zoom.
Okay. All right, secretary's report, we do have one set of minutes from February twenty-second that we have to approve. Abby, the only thing that I see on this is under visitors, you have Elizabeth Schlenker, but it was her sister Nora, and it's N O R A H. I think you have that under the Project Three Fifty-One section. That was all, that was all I saw.
Okay.
That was all I saw, maybe else has any changes, additions, subtractions, additions? Why is that with your motion?
I'm gonna motion to the meeting minutes of July twenty-one.
Second.
I don't know who's doing them, I don't know who's at your meeting.
Dustin made the motion and just seconded. All right, motion is made, seconded, any further discussion? So I guess I can just go to the three that are there, so Deanna?
No discussion, looks good.
All right, yay or nay, you in favor?
Oh, yes, in favor.
Abstain? Sarah?
Yay, Doc Wilson is here too.
Okay. Jim?
Abstain.
Dean? All right, everybody else has made an easy one, all in favor? Post, look at that, like that.
Okay, can I make sure I know who's there? I got Dustin, Anne, Craig.
So you got myself, you got Craig, you got Jay, you got Dustin, you got Anne, you got Matt, and you got.
Okay. And Tracy, Tracy the only one not here?
Tracy is not here, yep.
Okay.
All right. The executive session minutes are the same night. The only thing that I see is under present and absent, you just need to flip-flop, Craig Morris was not here, Jay Morgan was. You have it the other way around.
Okay.
Anybody see anything else? All right, Dustin made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Deanna makes the second. All right, Mr. Morris?
Abstain.
Doc Wilson?
Abstain.
Trey, Sarah?
Yay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Perfect. All right, get your packet, we had some communications. And we've got another grant for the growing literacy equity across Massachusetts. We have our newsletter, we've got the all-important memo from Commissioner Riley about starting up school again, and then the subcommittee list, which I did update. Sarah, I threw off as chair of policy, Craig volunteered very nicely to be the chair of policy, and we as a mayor. Do you know after elections, we'll go through with restructuring the subcommittees? If anybody wants to go off or get on any one subcommittee, do more, more than one to. All right, our initial business matters. And our all-important budget code. Is that on you, Brian, is that Chair?
Yeah, so Sherry's here, Sherry's on Zoom. If there's any specific questions regarding any line items. Last month, I presented the budget with Sherry, Sherry and I presented the budget together. The budget book is there for everyone, it's posted online for the community. So at this point, it would be my recommendation to approve the budget for fiscal year twenty-two and that you know, Mr. Chair, the budget can go down, but it can't go up.
Right, so I know the budget subcommittee has met a couple times over the last few months. I think we've met probably what, nine, ten times all said and done. We did have the initial budget presentation, as superintendent said, the budget can always go down, but by law, we have to vote it X number of days before town meeting so we can get it into the town so they can start the process of posting it for their warrants and getting their anonymous budget all said and done. So again, one of the presentation last week, I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments that they wanna make, or anything about last week's budget presentation? Frank, Deanna, Sarah, you guys got anything? Craig, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Andrew, just a couple concerns about the budget after spending some more time looking at it and going through it. My biggest concern is given the financial situation that Westbrook Field is in, and I can't speak for the finances in Warren, we're asking the town of Westbrook Field to contribute fifteen percent more above minimum than last year. And that's a good chunk of money. And we're also using a lot of one-time funds in this budget that may not be available to us next year, the tune of almost, you know, almost a million dollars. So it's my concern is that we're setting ourselves up for some future problems if we approve this budget as it stands with that amount of money in it. So I think it would be in our best interest to actually reduce that in order to kind of get ahead of planning for the next couple of years.
Okay. Okay. Um. Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's, you know, obviously, it's, it's the point that we are at right now versus the point we were at you know, three months ago when we started is uh, you know, definitely very different. Um, I think again, I mean, the budget subcommittee does meet again on April 12th. Um, and I do know, you know, like, like I just said, once the budget's voted, we can continue to trim money out of the budget. I think that we, I think we can do it on due diligence, that trimming as much out of the budget as we can is beneficial both for the short term and the long term. Um, you know, I, I think we should definitely continue to look at it all the way up to, like I said, the past, right, right for town meeting. Um. Did you have another question, Greg, or is that?
No, that was, that was pretty much it. Um, you know, if I had my preference, um I'd like to see, you know, uh us to reduce the budget by that amount of those one-time funds or at least by the over minimum um we're asking for the towns. Um, I don't know if we, something we do tonight or we do it at the budget meeting, but I think that, you know, I, I think, you know, if we bring this budget to the towns, I think it's going to be DOA.
Jay, yeah, so uh yeah, I agree with you, Greg. This is, this, this, I want to make, not just for you, Greg, but for everyone else, especially some of the newer people. Um, this could be vote this tonight, the work's not done. Uh, this isn't, send it in, we're done. Um, I have, I just wanted to iterate, whether or not Chairman Schranker said it or Mr. Dr. Wilson said it, but uh the vote tonight is based on regional school agreement and and timelines that we have to meet. It's by no means um where we want to be. So I agree with what you're saying, Greg. Um, I also would also think if those numbers were different in this school, uh regional school agreement, we probably wouldn't be voting today. We would still be um talking and trying to get this number down. Uh, one thing I, I do like is the concept we know it can't go up. Um. We've done some good work, I agree. I, I, I think I thanked everyone on the, on the budget meeting before what you've done. Um, but I think we're only at maybe the fourth visiting of a 9-18 game. There's more stuff to do. Um, so the vote tonight is definitely not our final number. Because I don't see it that way. Um, but again, um, I don't want to lose track that this is more formality, but uh, you know, the next step after this as well is more communications with the towns because we have the number in Starlight. Uh, the last thing I'll say is add to this for some of the new people is that obviously, when we're based on what the state gives us uh every year, and those numbers are fluctuating as well, that obviously, as we get closer to the town meetings, uh we'll get more and more information. Hopefully, things get a little bit more clearer so that way we can make better judgments. We're doing our best piece now and agree. Let's come up with, we have to come up with some contingency plans for for.
And we do have, we have only seen the governor's initial budget. We haven't seen the House's budget. Um, we haven't seen the Senate's version. We haven't seen the governor's final version. I did see something, I think, today that um the ways, Senate Ways and Means are, are planning a, a meeting coming up this week sometime uh where they're going to address, you know, education and funding for education. So, you know, again, you know, we have, we have to vote our budget in in March. And, you know, the chances of seeing an actual budget from the state is more like, you know, June. So I think last year, we didn't get a budget until, what, December? But obviously, those were standing by sort of states. So, um, anybody else have any?
I'll, I'll turn it to, right? I have a concern as well about the one-time, you know, using one-time funds here. Um, I think the point that helps me understand better is the fact that they're being used to support programs and hopefully uh see value in our school system, but also decrease what we have to spend two, two years. As well as one time that we're investing money, you know, upfront right now, the money coming in next year, the couple of years down the road when we don't have those months coming in, those programs will hopefully be starting to pay for themselves in that term. Um, so I'd agree that instead of being concerned about those, um but that is what can help me feel a little bit more comfortable in, in how that money is being used.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right. Carrie Nunn, I will uh, I will entertain the motion.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2022 Quabog Regional School District budget to $18,852,789, consisting of operational of $18,703,741 after debt expense of $149,048. And to fund the proposed budget within the assessment for the town of Warren consisting of $3,809,816 for operating expenses and $149,048 for debt expenses for a total assessment of $3,958,864. And an assessment for the town of Westbrookfield consisting of $3,903,420 for operational expenses and $0 for debt expenses for a total assessment of $3,903,420. And for that, changes made in state aid and spending requirements may result in changes being made in the subsequent phase.
Do we have a second?
I'll call second.
Aye. Okay, motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Kathy, we will send you a copy of that motion so you have it for the minutes. Deanna.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Greg.
Aye.
All in favor? Opposed? Oh, Doc Wilson, sorry, Jim.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Good. All right.
Who opposed?
No one opposed, unanimous.
Okay.
11-0. All right.
No, I'm talking.
All right. Subcommittee updates. Mr. Morgan, budget.
I think we just did that. Um, uh, the only I'd say is um for members of the committee, um again, you want to reach out to me, give me some ideas, if you have maybe start something going on, I'll revisit if we need to meet earlier. Based on, I'm, I'm reached out to, had some conversations with uh Westbrookfield earlier, a few weeks ago, and we're hoping to start that conversations with Warren. So if uh if needs are I, I might reach out if we need to get to meetings sooner. If not, then we'll meet on the 12th and go from there uh and, and uh create meetings as needed uh to get this finalized.
I just say thank you to Selectman Nathan, who's on the call tonight. I'm not sure if there's other Selectmen on the call. Um, but we've been going back and forth on an email, so it may be time for either a joint meeting or, or meetings with the House. But I'm, I'm happy to set those up.
I would, I would say that the timeframe that we had, I think it would be worth having that prior to this budget meeting so we can use the outcome of that, of that conversation at that budget meeting.
Okay.
So I think that would be helpful.
I think Mr. Nathan agrees.
And just let us know. I'm muting myself because my dogs are going crazy.
All right, personnel.
So we will have an update in executive session. Um, we have a meeting tomorrow night and we have um a meeting scheduled for next week as well, the 23rd.
All right, policy, Mr. Morris.
Uh, yes, tonight we have the uh third meeting uh to approve the revised policy JICFB.
Right. Included in your packet is that policy. It's been included in the packet for three straight months. So this is the final month for anybody to make any changes and/or additions or subtractions. Um, it's in your policy book. Questions or comments on it? Carrie Nunn, I have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the policy.
Second.
Sarah. All right. Uh, well, I'll go to the obvious, Greg.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Deanna.
Aye.
Jerry.
Aye.
All right, all in favor? Unanimous. All right. All right. I thank Mr. Bergeron for uh the vote through that and making all the necessary change he made. So to inform him that that's not part of our, part of our policy. Um, all right, building update. We're just, we haven't met in a while.
There was no building subcommittee meeting last month. The next meeting will be April 4th at 16.
Okay. And both for building and budget, if you would add to your agendas, the uh regional foundation grant as they come due. Um, we can discuss those. I'll be ready to bring those over to the full committee, committee for, for voting. All right, new business. We have our, uh, we have our first pass at the 21, 22, like dare say, school year calendar. God, I hope it uh actually turns into a calendar.
So, Mr. Chair, that's a draft um that we're currently working on. It's just for school committee to look at. And what we can do is bring it back next month and approve it in April. Um, what I did do today is uh I, I forwarded to the QEA. Uh, they have by um their contract, they have a, a say through the school calendar. So I'm working with the QEA to uh make some changes. But it's, it's in draft form right now. Can I see Greg as a question?
It's more of a uh, a comment or uh some feedback on the calendar. Um, I see that we have seven one-half days planned um in this draft. Um, I can tell you as an educator and as a parent, um, as an educator, half-days are not that productive. Um, and I can tell you as a parent, half-days are very stressful. Um, so I would just ask if we can work on consolidating those days down to perhaps full days of PD um to lessen the disruption of kids' education. Um, and, and also just looking, thinking about the environment, that'll be less buses, uh bus curbs back and forth to all of our schools as well. So just some, just some feedback on that.
I would agree with Greg on that. I was also curious, why the seventh for a start date? That seems kind of late.
Yes. So it's in draft form. Um, and there is a, a clause in the teacher's contract that starts so many days prior to uh Labor Day. Um, so that, that's where that's at. The only thing I would say to Greg's comment about the half-days, some of those are contractual. Uh, I'd have to look at the other ones that are not contractual. Um, but I can uh, I can, I'll, I'll take a closer look at it. Um, but just so that you're aware, we have a new person doing the calendar this year. Uh, so it's definitely uh, uh not something that I've invested a lot of time in to date, uh but that I will uh, I will take a closer look at uh later on this week and next week.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I appreciate it because I know a lot of parents have caught me at various places around town and complained about half-days. So anything we can do to alleviate that stress with Greg?
One of the questions, um, the PD days of making the school that we had this year, you don't foresee those being obligated for next year, right?
That, so the question was about the professional development at the start of this school year. The state gave us 10 extra days. I, I, I mean, anything could happen. Uh, but I'd be very surprised if there was anything like that. Um, and if there was something like that, then we'd have to change it at that time. So my recommendation would be to look at contractual, what we need to provide for professional development, and that's it. Um, and then if there are, uh, if, if there's a, a change from the state, then we would adjust it at that time.
All right, so this is a work in progress. And uh, we'll be ready to vote on it next month. What's up? Okay. All right, so a public hearing period. This is the opportunity for visitors to make statements or ask questions about anything that is on the agenda and on the agenda only. Um, if anybody has any questions that they want, you're probably going to have to go up to your computer to uh figure it out.
Jen Goodell has her hand raised.
This is Goodell. Good evening.
Hi, everybody. Um, I didn't realize that you guys were meeting in person tonight. Um, so not that that has anything to do with my question. It has a little bit to do with my question. I'm wondering if you guys are considering at all um maintaining the Zoom option on your school committee meetings?
So we haven't considered. Um, I think kind of tonight is a, is a trial run to see how, you know, how, how it works. Um, you know, obviously, tonight's portion for, for the audience was not going to be, be live. Um, I mean, quite honestly, the, the, the thought of having it fully in person this month did cross my mind. Um, my, my fear was the perception would have been that we were trying to pull something over as far as the budget by having the entire budget presentation process being via Zoom up until the night where we voted in the, you know, voted in the budget. So I figured we would keep this portion of, of the meeting Zoom. But like I said at the beginning of the meeting, as we uh, you know, a, as we start the transitions back into the district, it's a matter of time that we start transitioning school committee back into the district as well.
I appreciate that feedback. I just, there's very little that we probably want to take from COVID, but I feel like the ability for the community to engage more in public meetings um with very little effort on the committee's part, not just your committee, but any committee in general, um, I feel like is a pretty decent endeavor. And I would, I would hope that you guys would at least consider um keeping the Zoom option for your meetings. You know, I, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there. Thank.
Thank you. Josh. Heather, you out there? Heather?
Oh, hello, sorry. I had headphones on and couldn't figure it out. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Hi, um, I just wanted to add quickly to, to Jen Goodell's statement. Um, I think a lot more people would be more involved if you did keep the live um or the Zoom portion of your meetings. I know when I used to attend in person, a lot of my friends had said, oh, I wish they would record them or I wish they were on TV so that there was a way that they could participate. So I think that would be a great thing to keep um these meetings on Zoom. My question is, after Brett's um presentation with the $230,000 um figure above last year's budget, I was under the impression that, you know, that was a, between the two towns, that's what you were going to be asking the two towns for above, you know, minimum contribution. But then when I looked at the budget book, I saw that um for Westbrookfield speaking is you're going to actually ask them for $374,000 above minimum. Is that correct? Am I reading that right? It's very confusing to me.
So the two, so the 200 and, and let's say 30,000, I don't know. That's the increase over last year's budget.
Right.
That's, that's different than the money that goes to the town. And you also have to keep in mind that there is, you know, the minimum contribution that comes from the state for the towns. The state tells the towns that they have to contribute towards the district. And that changes year to year. And you know that this year, it actually went up for both towns. Um, and it's not proportionate. It doesn't go up the same amount across every town. It has to do with, you know, residents and home values and tax levels and all of that stuff that I really claim to understand. But um, it is, it is a, a number that they're, you know, that, that they're given by the state. The above minimum is, is the difference between our state aid, the town state aid, and then our total budget.
Right, but is our, is that number correct? The 374,000 for Westbrookfield is what? If the budget stayed what it is right now, is that what we would be asking Westbrookfield for?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And I'm all set, thank you so much.
The, the increase of forty-eight thousand from last year's above minimum.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Alright, Mr. Burrell.
Yes, thank you, uh, very quick, just, uh, two sentences to say. Uh, I did receive an email, and I did reply back to the email, and that's all I have, thank you.
Alright, I couldn't really hear what you said, but, uh.
He said that he did receive an email, and he did reply to an email, and thank you.
Okay, alright, I will, uh, I will look at that, and, uh, yeah, we, we can finish our conversations.
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Okay, anybody, uh, anybody else? I think moving forward, we do have to figure out a way to make that screen a little clearer, because that or its lights in there. It's, it's the lights are over our heads or something like that, like, yeah. To work on things, but, um, alright, so that being said, we do have to go into executive session and discuss a few, uh, a few things. Uh, somebody wants to make a motion to do so? We're just gonna adjourn, we're in kind of executive session, we're just adjourned, we're not voting, so please, please. I think Mr. Burges is looking for his note. I have to add. It's on, it's on, it's, it's kind of spelled out on the agenda, how I used to do it.
I think most of the go to executive session for sort of the thirty days, we want to discuss education with Quaybog Education Association, public employee committee company. Executive session for including members of the school committee, our Chris Sopper, Catherine Linsky. We will reconvene in open session further.
Do you have a second?
I'll hold second.
Ooh, second.
I'm going with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Greg, Greg.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, Greg, alright, uh, what do you have, what do you have, you guys up there? Deanna.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Anne.
Aye.
Megan.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
I. Jay Morgan.
Aye.
Anne. And Dustin, make me creep my neck, alright? Thank you, everybody. It's seven-thirty. Burge. Last day.
That's like a career day, dude.
It's, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a two-hour executive session. On our, on the court. Not as I say, that's the, uh.